Yes.
Okay, it is 5:30 and I'm going to call this City Council Workstations Order. Basically, do we have a quorum?
She just went upstairs, yes, sir.
Okay, we did, thank you. Okay, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to talk about capital projects for the upcoming bond, so bond issues are going to turn over to Alan, let him walk us through what he sent us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to tell you that, that over the past week, we have done an immense amount of work on the, the proposed bond election. Mr. Williams is, is in the process of making copies right now. He has new or more accurate, more exact engineers' opinions of cost. One of the, oh, you got it?
He just sent it out.
Oh, he just emailed it to everybody, thank you. He, uh... Hang on just a minute, there it is. It's coming up. All right. The, the Phase 1 downtown has a general fund cost of three and a half million, five, three and a half million, just over three and a half million dollars. The utility amounts... Okay, I'm not, I don't have the format. All right. There you go. All right, Phase 1 of downtown has a 3,000, uh, $3,553,000 general fund component. Storm is, is 17, 950, water is 244, 770, sewer is 115, 750. The engineering, surveying, and so forth is estimated to be about just under $600,000. Nick has a 20% contingency fee, which is, is 904,000. He has an escalator of 162,000, which would bring the entire amount to five, five and a half million dollars. Phase 2, the general fund is 1.8 to 9 million dollars. There is no storm in Phase 2. Phase 2 has, has $277,000 worth of water, 152,625 of sewer, 338 of engineering, 519 contingency, and 93,556 for escalation, for, for, uh, the escalation in inflation, which gives you a total of $3,212,090. The total amount for both projects for the general fund is 5,383,562. The enterprise fund is 808, 705, which would be COs, and the engineering contingency escalation and so forth is 2.6. We have estimated the rec hall at $8 million as directed. In looking at the Boski River Trail, based on the cost of the last phase, the two, the final one, two, three, four, five, four phases comes to six and a half million dollars. We had talked about doing $2 million in bonds. That's approximately, that, that would accomplish approximately one-third of what's left. Without counting any contributions from the private sector, that would be a third, a one-third match for any bonds, and so that would put us in very good standing to receive, or not bonds, but grants. That would put us in good standing to receive grants for the remainder of the trail. I asked Nick to, to estimate about $5 million worth of, of other street projects. He's an overachiever and did almost six. Nick, would you pass out your, your list? Oh, she's passing out the list now. It's, uh, Bellknap, Swan, Second, First, Cage, Sixth, and Fifth. That's kind of a pick and choose, the council's desire. All in all, downtown streets and the rec center streets as proposed is $19,272,512 with a, a enterprise fund of... Nick, question, enterprise, the, the total for the enterprise fund from, from the top phase?
For the bond piece, it's going to be approximately, well, it's, it's eight, it's the 808, 705 plus the 2,208,000, so about 2.3 million.
Okay. All in all, with projects of the COs, which we're, we can either discuss or not discuss today, the COs totaled $31,171,955 as, as, or on these sheets. That includes Tulane Extension of Harbin, the Well Field, and Long Street. That does not include the, the, no, I'm sorry, that does not include Harbin. That includes the, the downtown piece, the streets piece, and...
Boski River Trail.
Boski River Trail. And, uh, the utility, the, the CO piece is, uh, Long Street and the Well Field, and then the Harbin Extension would be ATIP CO. That's kind of a brief description of, of the bond packages as we as staff understand it. Both of those are in the parameters of where we were directed. We were directed at $20 million for the bonds and somewhere around 30 for the, the COs, and we are there.
I want to ask this silly question, Alan. Where can we see all that summarized on one sheet?
You should have it in your email, Mayor. It's in two sheets.
The total at the bottom of the CO page, that'd be the second page of that summary sheet, it includes both the Tulane and the Four Lane, so if you were to subtract $11 million out of that, you could subtract that out of that total $31 million in COs.
Questions for council?
So the, so if we did Tulane, that would be 20 million COs.
Yes, sir.
You want to say that again?
The, uh, both the Four Lane and the Tulane are included in that 31 million, so if you did a Tulane, that total would actually be about 21 million, about 20 million.
Okay, I got you.
On Harbin.
That total was inadvertently included for both Tulane and...
It was in a Tulane.
Yes.
Okay. Because that's not...
Alan, what you're calling the rec hall is going to be the multipurpose?
Yes, sir.
Facility?
Recreation Hall, Library, and Senior Center.
Okay, it's going to have all three?
Yes, sir. We have, we've, we've not named the, the official name for the facility, so yes, sir, it's a multipurpose building.
Okay, one gym or two?
Whatever we can get for $8 million. We've been told that, that with a design build, we have a local builder who could do it, put two for that price.
For the 8 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And still have adequate floor space for the other uses?
That is my understanding, sir, yes, sir.
Now, let me explain, Mr. Nick's, that would most likely be using a design build where we hire a single team to both design it and build it. That is an acceptable delivery method in the state of Texas. Cities don't use it a whole lot, schools do use it a whole lot. It is a successful delivery thing. I don't know why cities don't use it more, but, but it is a proper and approved delivery method of a building.
Is that in lieu of the bid process?
No, sir, you would still go through the request for proposal phase where you would actually, they would submit a bottom line in their bid. They would, it would be all broken down, but, but at the end of the day, you'd be looking at the bottom line, we can get this building for X million dollars from this builder, X million dollars from that builder with a design build.
Okay.
And I suspect we'll probably get a couple of, a couple of bids in addition to our local bidder. Speed Factory does a lot of design builds, and there's another one in, in the Metroplex that does a lot of design builds.
Other questions?
So Nick, under the, the streets, those seven street projects?
Yes, sir.
The, the 5.888 million is also over here on the CO page? Is that, is that included in that 31 or 20 million, whatever it would be?
Yes, at the bottom of the second page, you see that, the 5.88951 is included on the, the CO. And the intention was to show you the downtown, the Well Field, so that the, the total would be 13.85 million out of the general fund for that piece. And I just finished this up when I came down here, so...
Okay.
If you find an error, let me know so I can fix it and attempt to pull up the sheet so I can do that.
Okay, I, I think I see what you're...
Nick, could you please give us a, I mean, a 5,000-foot view down, looking at the seven street projects as to what that will encompass? What will we, what will we see when, if those are approved by the voters and, and we work on those streets?
So this is historically an area that, that we've found some undersized old sewer and undersized water, as well as have a lot of drainage problems. Part of these projects are also in that GLO project that's going to be kicking off that addresses all of our drainage on Swan Street and partially on Hyman, and so what this would do would be to come back and replace those streets completely, not just patch them. So when we go into one of these streets here that are going to be on the east side of Lillian, what we do is we completely take the top off of it, fortify the base, and then come stabilize the base material, and then repave the entire portion with curb and gutter and sidewalk. There are some portions on the west side of Lillian as well that have some of the same problems, but are not going to, they're not going to be receiving the same kind of utility upgrades when it comes to stormwater. So on the west side of Lillian, what we're really looking at more is the water and sewer replacements, as well as the curb and gutter, pavement, and sidewalk.
So if we did the general fund portion, that 13.85, and the rest of those on the CO list, that CO is out of the enterprise fund, that would actually be 17.4 million, correct? Out of enterprise funds? If we did the Tulane-Harbin?
Right. The Tulane-Harbin is going to give you... Let me log in here so I can add this up. So on Harbin, looking at the Tulane portion, just the utilities portion, looks like it's $924,400 for the water sewer. And it's actually 424.4 if you take the right-of-way out of the Tulane Extension.
Okay.
At some point, we need to factor in the professional services, the engineering survey, and then what a contingency factor might be for that. Ballpark to take out, your right-of-way there, you're looking at $6 million for the Tulane.
Okay. But, but I guess, I guess the main thing is I just make sure I understand, if we, if we take the general fund portion of Phase 1, Phase 2 downtown, and the general fund portion of those seven street projects goes to bond, then there would be about 17 million remaining for COs? Not the, not... Does that make, make sense what I'm asking?
In the street projects, right, there's almost six, 5.8, 5.9 in general fund of the street projects, and downtown puts another 5.4 on top of that.
Right. So this, I guess the main thing, I'm just, this 31 million that's in this total down here?
Yes, sir.
That includes those two numbers, correct?
The 31 million at the bottom includes Long Street, downtown, the Streets Utilities, and the Well Field.
Okay, that's what I, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Doug, I would, I would ask, based on what's been presented here tonight, what, what does the bond language look like in, in, in staff's mind right now, based on what they presented tonight?
There would be seven, uh, well, wait a minute, four, nine, I apologize. There would be nine initiatives, I believe it is. Downtown could be one, or it could be two, the rec hall, the Boski River Trail, and then whatever number of streets, so it could be as many as 11 different initiatives on the ballot.
We would put all, we could each of those seven streets individually?
We could, I presume we could put it in one initiative if they were, if those seven streets were defeated, then you could not borrow for those seven streets for the next three years. If they were individually and, say, Bellknap passed, but Cage did not, then you can't borrow for Cage, so it, it's just the pleasure of this council, whether you do all seven of those, or you do one encompassing one of those seven, you would list them. Street improvements of Bellknap, Swan, Second, First, Cage, Sixth, and Fifth.
When you package this, do you have to be specific and say, we're going to go from the 400 block to the 700 block of Street A and et cetera? Do you have to be that specific on the bond, or do you just say Bellknap Street?
I think it can be done either way. I think the more specific you can be, the better off you are. That's subject of course to, to Mr. Culver's opinion, our, our bond attorneys, but I think the more specific you can be, the better you are, the better off you are.
Nick, I think we ask this every time, I'm sure you get tired of hearing this ask us, but if you assume that those seven street projects pass and Phase 1, Phase 2 of downtown passes?
And long, and we're doing long.
And we know we're going to, and we, and we end up doing a long, do we have the physical capacity to complete those within whatever timeframe the bond would require?
I think we do. With the, the granting of unfreezing those last two positions, I think we'll have the oversight ability to do that. We're going to need somebody else in the office to fill the, the city engineer position, but if we do that, then I don't have any reservations about being able to complete the work.
Okay.
Nick, this is probably not a fair question, but you, you have these streets that are not necessarily prioritized, I'm going to say, you just have streets. Would these be your top priorities for all the streets in the city? If, if we had unlimited funding, which we do not, but if we did, would these be your priorities?
Bellknap would certainly be a priority with long. The rest of these, kind of the instructions were to find some projects that were lower on the utility side, so that we could take advantage of having a lower cost for utility replacement, and that only makes sense to, to follow that GLO project. So that really turned out nicely for us to, the fact that we're going to have a contractor go in and replace a lot of the water sewer and the drainage pieces in there really helped us out.
And that makes more, that makes these more logical?
Right.
To, to continue the work then, assuming that the bonds are approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So as a package deal, yes, sir, it would be, it would be a priority.
Okay.
These make some significant improvements in, I would assume especially the first, Cage, Sixth, and Fifth, Second, well, all of them, except maybe Bellknap. All, are all in one, is that all in one basin?
Yes.
To make some significant improvements to that basin?
And that may be what you, going back to Mr. McClintock's question, that may be what you, you want to do is, is to lump the streets that are all together in a single initiative and have Bellknap separated.
Well, there's some of these streets that, that would be more logical to do as a package because of proximity and, and other issues, especially with the water and stormwater.
Correct.
So I, I would certainly recommend that that be done. You can pull Bellknap out because it's kind of standalone, and long is standalone.
Yes, sir.
But some of these others, there needs to be some consideration given for the utility and, and storm drainage at the same time, because that all needs to tie in that area.
Yes, sir.
Alan?
Yes, sir.
Just, just so that I've got this straight, we can split out and, and have Bellknap out there, and then the streets that are Swan, Second, First, Cage, and Sixth, and Fifth in the one package deal, correct?
I believe that's correct. I'll have to confirm that with, with Mr. Culver, but I believe that's correct.
Okay. Because, I mean, they're all part of a, a, the basin study, they're all there fairly close together, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
I, I think on our part, it would be foolish to probably to list all of them individually, and let's say Cage was the only one that, that passed, we wouldn't have the, the economies of scale. We wouldn't be able to leverage the, the, the utilities that Nick was talking about.
I agree.
Other questions?
When we call the election, do we have to have all of these different items?
Yes, sir.
Categorized and, and basically ready for the ballot?
Yes, sir. What staff would do between now and, and the time you call the ballot, or the, the election would be to work with Mr. Culver to, to get the proper wording, to get the proper sequence, to be sure that, that we have covered all of our bases as far as, as how to list the projects, how to name the projects, and so forth. But yes, sir, our next step, provided that we get an indication that these are the projects that we want to move forward with, we certainly cannot vote, but as long as staff walks away with, with the understanding that these are probably the, the ones that we need to, to talk, to, to include, then we'll begin working with Dan to get the, the ballot done, get the, or the ballot wording done, get the ordinance to call the election, and to get all that done. Now, we have found out that, and this is a strange thing, the election schedule for a bond is different than the general election schedule. The general election schedule began, begins tomorrow morning, signing up for council and, and elective office. We cannot call the bond election until after January 31, because it has to be done within a time period of so many days. So we have, from February 1st to February 12th, we have our council meeting, February, I believe it's the second, and so we could call it at, at the regular council meeting. It does not happen, you called it a regular council meeting, but, but it just happens to be that that's the most convenient date to, to make the call.
Alan, I'm Michelle, the ignorance here. I don't see, does the $8 million include the ball fields we talked about that park?
No, sir, there was a conversation about doing a CO on the ball fields and paying with, paying for them with the 2% parks, hot funds.
Does that include also the repair of current gym?
Uh, yes, sir, that, that would include the same thing. The, the hot funds would.
I want to make sure that's on, it's on the agenda.
Uh, yes, sir.
So in other words, that would be another bond we have called?
No. Oh, the 8 million, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. The 8 million is, is only for the new building? The, the repair for the current building, we had discussed last time, lumping it and the ball fields into a CO to be paid for by the hot funds.
I just want to make sure, but you don't have that on this list anywhere?
No, sir. Actually, we were really not even going to talk about the, the COs, but since there's such a CO component to, to the downtown and, and the streets, we felt like it was necessary to do that.
Okay.
Again, we'll address the COs in more detail as we move, move along.
Okay. Anybody else?
One question.
I'm just asking...
Oh, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Darrell.
Uh, with regard to the River Trail Extension, will this be tied, lump sum, we're talking about directly $2 million? Are we talking about tying it to a specific phase? Are we talking about tying it to a specific Phase One or Phase Five, Four or whatnot? Or are you talking about it in general?
I think the thought, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the thought for the committee that's been working is to link JC Park with the golf course. It goes to Prairie Lynn from JC Park.
So that's a $2,115,000 project?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
All right.
Nick, did you actually talk to the committee about that project?
No, I did not visit specifically with the committee about the project.
Would you do that? What that project is, that's a $470 per linear, let's put it, trail. So what that price comes out to be?
Yes, sir.
If I understand. So, because they're talking about on, for the majority of that, not having concrete, but just having granite, et cetera, which would drive that cost down a lot a bit. Before we actually get this in there, I want to make sure that you talked with him about the design component. That number is extremely high, but it may cost that much, I don't know. I'm just, just be sure you talk with the committee. And the chair of the committee, I think is, I think is meta.
Okay. I think that's correct. Yes, sir. We'll do.
I just want to ask one question, Alan, about timing. If you're planning to hit this February 2, when will we have preliminary language that we can take a look at prior to that?
It's a good question. What I would do, Mr. McClintock, is get with Mr. Culver. Mr. Culver sent me a preliminary, really rough draft of the ordinance today. Coming out of this meeting, I think we can come up with the wording that we need. Hopefully, we can get it back to you very quickly, certainly in more than enough time to consider it at the council meeting.
Thank you.
And what I'll do, Mr. McClintock, is probably tell him that we need it next Friday or maybe 10 days from today or something like that.
On the Boski River Trail?
Yes, sir.
If that were to pass, say, let's just say 2 million, that were to pass and we don't get any grants, that we can use that as matching funds, is there a timeframe that that backs us into, okay, we've got $2 million, then we just have to spend 100% of it as far as it'll go?
There is a time period, but it's a very lengthy time period. I want to say it's like 10 years.
Okay.
I mean, it's a long time.
Okay. So there's a good chance that we could do that still in phases?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And are applying for additional grants and things like that?
That's correct. These, TexDOT is continuing to have the off-system grant for trails. As a matter of fact, we're looking into applying for a grant for the next phase.
Okay.
Anything else?
Will any of these be impacted if we receive any of the CVG grant funds?
As structured now, no, sir.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
So you have the option at the Main Street Grant, it may have some ability to offset the.
That's right. I forgot.
Or streets?
Still not used to being a Main Street City. There is, we are applying for a $350,000 Main Street Program Grant and it is for infrastructure. So yes, sir, there may be some impact.
So there will be, it could be an offset there, possible?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If it's an offset, I'm assuming that what Nick was trying to say is that we could use it someplace else within the project or another project?
We could use it for engineering, let's say. You cannot supplant with a state grant like that, meaning get it, subtract $350,000 from this project and use it someplace else. But we could use it for streets, we could use it for benches, we could use it for engineering, those type things.
Okay. Thank you. Council, we're, I was at this work session where I don't vote or anything, but does anybody else need to give input or questions before we send this to staff to finish? Alan, timeframe is when? Wouldn't want to bring this up again, keep it all real clear.
I'm going to tell Mr. Culver that we need this information by the 19th. Wait, that's not right.
Okay.
The 26th, I'm sorry. Ain't right either. Where's the calendar? We need it by the 21st, is, 21st or 22nd, so that we can get it to council the following week, which is the week of the 25th through the 29th.
Have you bought the council for vote when?
February 2nd.
February 2nd, okay. Any other instructions or questions for staff?
Yeah.
Is that everything, Alan?
Yes, sir.
It is 6:05 and I will stand this work session and timeout. We'll adjourn this work session. Thank you very much for everybody's attendance. Thank you.
We have the executive session also, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. Okay, Stacy, are we now on executive session?
Hold on one second. So we're going to need you to call us into the special meeting and then read the executive session language and then we can, give us a second to get us quiet in here.
Where is the language for executive session, Stacy?
It'll be on the agenda in accordance with whatever that is it starts with.
Okay. Well, it doesn't say it on the agenda.
Thank you, Nick.
All it says on the agenda is work session. I'm going to go back to.
Go to, yes, sir, to the special meeting agenda.
Okay, here we are. Complying with the provisions of the Texas Open Means Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Burns, Texas Code annotated, in accordance with Section 551.074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation or assessment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to it, the city engineer, public works director, finance director, police chief, fire chief, actually taking these on in the executive session if necessary. Therefore, we're going to adjourn into executive session at this time.